Six o'clock, the public hearing to order. Please rise with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America. It is neither republic nor religion. One nation under God, indivisible, with whose people.
Dana has the role.
Yep.
And then we'll just move right on to it then.
You see that okay? Okay, so this public hearing is to review the preliminary land combination application from the city. To combine the three parcels that make up the demolition project. That the city have been working on in partnership with you. There are the three downtown lots adjacent to city hall. Parcels eighty-one, one twenty, oh, one, one twenty, and one twenty-two. Noted in the blue area on the certificate of service from Matt Murray. On the three parcels, as they are right now, are three individual tax parcels, they would become one in order for the city to resell as one construction project in the future. This hearing is to hear any public comment for or against. And much similar, the reason for the meeting. If there's any anybody that wants to make comment, please do so, I'll take note of it and then that's at that point. The city council has the authority at the September sixth committee to approve the combination or not approve the combination.
Very good.
Does anybody want a paper copy of the certificate of survey that's here presently? Well.
Babe, then at this time will be general question from the public. Just zooming.
Remember you have to ask three times.
Well, there. Any questions from the public?
Three convey on the one from eight seventeen.
Yes, and I was gonna bring that up at the work session, Daryl. On what you're seeing on the, what you're seeing on the certificate of survey that Matt Murray did last Friday was because the two additions of the theater end up on lot number eighteen. The city, I'm gonna propose in the work session that city convey that one point eight seven amount of feet to the owners of lot nineteen to make a clear property line for this whole parcel.
Is that part of that city's land?
Currently, yes. Currently, yes. So what you see here, let me blow it up a little bit, Don, it might make it easier. So the main foundation line of forty-eight main is the shaded line here between the blue and the red line. Okay, when the additions of the theater were made to the concession stand and the rear section, the middle is the original portion of the theater. Those two self-facing walls were built up against the existing building of forty-eight main on lot eighteen. So when our contractor removed that clay tile wall, all that it was exposed was two by four construction insulated. So our contractor has, you know, put tieback on it to protect it from the elements. But to make the easiest transition when JD Construction comes in and rebuilds this wall to complete the theater, they're going to build it on that foundation wall of forty-eight main. That way it has a sturdy area for it to continue on in its future. In order for that to be on there though, it needs to be on its own property. So getting a little bit ahead of myself as in tell everybody at the session, but that's fine. It's probably good information. It was a question. It's good. It's a good question. Um, what I'm proposing is that once the parcels are combined, that one point seven feet would be conveyed to that parcel owner then giving one contiguous piece their title.
So eighty-one hundred twelve one hundred. This is a lot, that's a split lot off the back.
Correct. Open by Anderson's. Yep. I did propose that to the shade store and they are not interested in relinquishing it at this time. My intention was to see if they wanted to release it so that it could be combined with these existing three parcels and they declined. They believe they need it for access to the rear of their other buildings.
Do we have any other questions?
What you asking for?
I'm looking, I'm looking.
So it's a general, I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna combine them hopefully and assume. And then put them up for sale. In what format?
I've drafted a, I have a draft of a resolution for the council to consider on September sixth to put it on the market. It's up to them how they choose, but the draft also has language in there to provide the city administrator the authority to sell as needed. So it depends on how the council wishes to control that. And that's in your work session pocket too.
But you got an offer?
No, I just know some people that can.
Do we have any other question? No other questions? The motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Public hearing is adjourned. Call the word the special council meeting. You want the just six oh eight?
Six oh eight is fine. Yeah, I did approximate so that I didn't know how long.
I will then dispense with the pledge of allegiance if I can get approval of this agenda for the special meeting.
Offer the special meeting.
We'll do approve the second. A little second breath. Any discussion on this? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda is approved. Great line of stitches, better chief and Larson.
I'm up already and you're up.
Do you need this?
Can I do it from back here?
Well, that's up to your mayor.
Can I do it from back here? We can hear you.
So we have the opportunity to get into a new fire truck about a year and a half sooner than what we had originally planned. This particular rep, do they have this?
Yes.
Okay. So this particular rep, he works for McQueen, they deal with Pierce. The manufacturer of the fire trucks. And we were just looking basically to get the ball rolling because of the lead time with these trucks. So basically you get everything set down with it on and then they they build it. That was looking anywhere from twenty-four to twenty-seven month out. So, by the ways. He did approach me with the idea because we had asked him for something specific. A water tender slash pumper with a commercial chassis that they do, they have basically called a fleet line that they build out of Florida. And they just keep rolling off the assembly line and they put them. Christina, help me with the co-op.
Yeah, it's a consortium.
Consortium.
Yep.
And then it's basically, you know, first comfort surfer. They just keep rolling these commercial chassis units. I wanna say they, you know, it's like stamping them all one by one, the same thing, they are different, you can we can add things to it that would fit our department, which I have done, who have taken the base the base truck. And added some things that make it specific for Black Duck. And what was the total again? Three sixty-one two hundred fifty thousand. The funding we have is available. We're on, we're around nine years.
Uh, no, we would be entering nine years in two thousand twenty-three, Brian, we're on our eighth year currently.
Okay, so we'll have the ninth year in.
Correct.
By the time we get it.
Correct.
Okay, so the townships and the cities have had entered into a ten-year contract with fire departments to basically fund truck depreciation. And they had put in thirty dollars a year.
Yeah, thirty thousand a year for ten years for three hundred thousand dollars.
Correct. The remainder of the balance would come from an equipment fund that we have that has been funded by donation from the release. So basically getting into something we need very dearly and a lot quicker. The quickness, albeit, you know, it is kind of shocking for me because I wasn't really expecting that, but for it eventually we're gonna save money because we're gonna get the thing within nine supposedly. Then nine months. What is it, May?
Yes.
After the two-year wait.
There was twenty, forty-four, twenty-seven month wait time. For one, that basically is the same thing. Just custom ordered.
Could you explain to us, Brian, that how we're kinda killing two birds with one stone on this one?
Yeah, so we had, I spoke to you guys already about we're gonna replace the chassis on one of our tanks, so we're gonna put the tank body in it. The last time I spoke to you guys about back, the Mack chassis, it's an automatic chest, we're gonna throw that out, put the tank body on it. This one here is, is kinda gonna kill two birds with one stone. We're in desperate need of another frontline truck. The, the custom period we do have, it's a ninety-six. It's, you know, there's, we maintain it, you know, not saying they're wore out, that truck will be here for a very long time. Uh, we have another truck that it's kind of kinda in the same situation that it's it, it's gonna need some help. Put in lightly. Basically, this, this will kill two birds with one stone and give us another automatic chassis, uh, water tender, which is what it primarily is gonna be used for. Uh, we're not getting rid of a truck. We're adding. So it's gonna give us another twenty-one hundred gallons as far as a water tender capabilities, but it also has to play dual role because it also can be a frontline engine. It'll have a twelve hundred fifty gallon per minute pump in it. But I call it a tender pumper, so it's a tender and an engine in one truck. Which would be very nice because we definitely need a really dependable frontline truck.
And assuming we're approving.
Yes, that's why.
So that's what important.
My timing is of the opposite. As Brian alluded to is, this truck haven't even been built yet, but the way they are pre-selling.
Yeah.
For lack of a better term. It's the easiest way our department can put our stamp on it, knowing that it's coming for us, otherwise we may be waiting years rather than months.
So we, we had an opportunity when he first mentioned this to me. And he basically called me two days later and said, oh, it's gone. Now, these trucks, they're, they're, there's no VIN number. They haven't even got the chassis yet. They're selling it that quick. So we have to, like Christina said, we have to put a marker down. Not as far as monetary, but we have to commit to buying it, we gotta have a signed commitment. That yes, we will get you this truck, we will get you this chassis, we'll put it together for you and we'll deliver it for you.
And, and for the council members that haven't been with the city for very long. This ten-year contract with the townships and the cities for this capital improvement. I would say even last year, it was not Brian's intention to even move forward at this point because in his I'm gonna put words in my mouth, in his mind, three hundred thousand wasn't even gonna make a dent into a replacement truck. So this has given him a different perspective on how the department can move forward with a combination vehicle and yet save the taxpayers some money. Would that be fair?
Yeah, absolutely.
And hopefully produce the ISO for people's insurance companies in the future.
Yeah, get a new, uh, get reevaluated by ISO. Hopefully maybe get a markdown. Definitely as well. Can I ask a question then? Equipping the, the truck, is it being used current equipment or, or you replace with all new equipment too? The, the cost associated with it comes with what we need. So it's gonna have, I mean, ground might have to get a couple hours, but, but, um, it'll have the, it'll have three connects. Have the valves, valve covers. Swivel. Perception. Lights, slipper. Flashy red. Yeah, it should be, uh, the only thing right now where where we have to track down the, uh, which I'm sure I can, uh, we have COVID tracking on a hair maker's radio, which I'm sure I get one from the county. But that's radio will cost us nothing, basically, it'll be programming up to the. So the ten-year contract you have with townships, well, does that look like it's gonna be renewed in another year or two? I, I would ten years or? I would present it to them, as you know, this is, this is basically the fruits of your labor, what can do, what we can do with that money. I think it would be, you know, a good idea if they could do it, but ultimately that's their decision. You know, I'll plead the case that, you know, this is a really good idea. I mean, specifically for Black Duck when you know, we look at the, the truck, well, we do have one, it's, when we do get something new or, you know, light new, it, it is, it's quite a milestone because we keep on, we hold on for quite a long time. So the acquisition of a new chassis, new truck, I mean, that's, you know, with a commercial chassis, that's a twenty-five year truck, easy. For Black Duck it is. You know, a commercial chassis or, I mean, a custom chassis, which, you know, about three times that much. You know, they're fifty years, fine. I mean, you guys know that, I mean, the appearance, it's, it's never gonna die.
And the, the, the meeting of the townships that happens twice a year when we do the budget at the year end in February, um, the conversation of renewing the contract, um, has come up for the last, the last year. And the parties that have been present to those meetings are open to renewing it based on previous conversations across the truck. On the budget meeting for the two thousand twenty-three fire year is just Thursday night. So the public knows, the townships are, and the cities are invited to attend.
Any other questions for Brian? Basically, if I understand you, the, the equipment that it's not replacing, but it's complementing is you know, can't continue without the truck, it's nearing the end of its lifespan.
The water tender we have, um, replacing with the chassis that we previously ordered. The other water tender, you know, it is a manual transmission, but it's okay. We're gonna just put that, we have room for, room for it inside. And we're gonna keep that one basically in service. And then the new one will be kind of alongside with the other two engines. Yes, it is, it is an addition. You know, yeah. But it's.
But it's necessary to compliment these other two that are.
Right.
That are not.
Right, we were, like I said, we were looking at replacing as far as another water tender. And then this, this, it's kinda snowballed and hit us really hard in the face and they said, what do you mean, we can get one in, you know, six months, what are you talking about? And, uh, we had every intention of basically putting one together and ordering it. However many months that would take. And that's what we're looking at, we're looking at a, a tender pumper.
This does not have a, a manual transmission. You know, difficultly recruiting people to go on and run a manual.
We do. Anything for Brian to go down the road? You can press me at the service. I, I think it's, uh, it's kinda too old, you got, you know, we have some that have driven automobiles with manual transmissions. But when you get into that type of vehicle with, you know, eighteen pounds pump of water on it and the chassis itself, it kinda goes out the window, you know? Just a little bit more.
Little bit more. Well, then at this time, I think I would add big motion. Want the numbers on this, Christina?
Sounds great. Brian, let's see the. Think of us to give the language. Right here. Yeah, I was like, I have the, I'm not on there. You use the language on the agenda and then slide in your purchase price.
Maybe second. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All's in favor? I oppose, or none. Trucks on the line.
Thank you very much.
And motion to adjourn, special meeting. We'll adjourn the special meeting, thank you.
Aye.
Uh, we can get to the work session. We have a call to adjourn or anything here on.
I think I'm ready, no one else is coming or going, so.
All right.
I think I'm okay to start.
We'll call them regular White Text City Council work session to order. We will dispense once again with the pledge. Already said at the beginning of the evening. Uh, all business. Oh yeah, approve the agenda, please. Thank you. In a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Building progress. Yep, I got the right page. Thank you.
Um, all right, so in your packet is field report five and progress minutes from the progress meeting of August twelfth. Any questions, concerns?
I have a question.
Or Mike can help out. Listening, right?
So it's set in there on the bottom there that they'll, we have to pay for the new server. The trend new transformer?
I'm not at that part, I'm, was there any questions on the progress meeting? I'll get to that. Yes, sir. Yep. You're referring to this, the chain order, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Do you have any guys coming questions on the field report of the progress meeting? I don't wanna rush you, Don. Okay, then I'll, then I'll move on to your question, Don, so, um, the electrical disconnect for the building. Um, as you can see in the email from Whitsett. Um, the original design had the building for a six hundred amp disconnect for the electrical service. Um, because it's one building and also that is quote compliant. The electrical inspector's opinion, um, required two disconnects because of the police side and the maintenance side. And so he wants the ability to disconnect one side from the other. Um, which is unfortunately a change from the original plans. So the impact is noted there that in lieu of one six hundred amp disconnect, they would provide two four hundred disconnects. The additional cost is the install is for the install of one additional disconnect and supply to four hundreds. Canceling the six hundred for a difference of an additional yeah, two thousand thirty-five dollars. And that's been submitted. You can see the, um, thought of it quote there and the total from TNT and some image from Whitsett. Which it happened, I mean, there's it's, it's required by the inspector, which in some cases. It's, it's required by the inspector, which in some cases, when you do a building. No matter how much you do code, it depends on who's reading the code.
I just, I just don't understand how these, all these extra changes there after we already started in this. If it took two or three years to get the building rolling. How do, how do you two thousand dollars or at least? Three thousand for this, I mean. At this, that seem should have been. All put in there. Figuring out, you know, when it started. You know, I mean, we did the, the value engineering, I mean, that, that took a lot off of it.
Hmm.
But that. Is still, still one dope, I don't understand why you got to have two.
Oh, that's what the inspector wants.
It's suggested. You know, I, that's, I agree with you all, I just came up with this, I'm like, this is what I wanted to know.
So those two. Got off box, power boxes.
Hmm.
So it's me, it made sense, Don, because it was like, they're running two different entities. So if they had to shut that power down, is that what we're talking about, they would have shut the whole building, so both entities would be down at the same time, had that power nearly shut off. So having that flexibility, it made sense to me, and but I I did think, well, why didn't you think of that to begin with, but I'm not. So it doesn't, it didn't make sense.
Because sometimes, you know, well, hindsight is twenty twenty.
You learn as you grow.
When you're, uh, putting something out like this.
Hmm. And, and my experience, what I've been listening to from TNT, the Woodset, is it really even depends on what region you're in and who's the inspector and how they interpret that code. Regardless of what your engineer and your architects are building plans off of, which is safe.
But this had to be, this had to go in front of electrical, it's back to get passed.
State inspector.
State, right, so. I'm, it's just, of course, question.
Certainly.
Do we know, was this a result of a field visit by the inspector or was he just reviewing the?
Uh, I can't speak to that, Mike, can you?
I'm not sure on that.
I, I, I can't speak to that, I'm sorry.
Well, it was even do it, you didn't decide this originally.
Oh, just human, no.
Yeah, it's, yeah. Rethought of that. Good.
Any other questions on those updates?
Um, I just, I, was there gonna be an issue with, with shortening that, um. Wash bay by ten feet through that, am I reading that correctly?
You are, um. My, we'll be going, yeah, I remember this meeting is not going to cause any issues down the hall. Okay.
Yeah. But regarding the change order, I don't think the amount is bad for commercial, like the quote. Should, should have a lot higher. You know. The cut so far. It's the actual, it's more labor, I think, than it is the actual cost of the bonds themselves. It's the having to put one over here and another one. Proper, not you, for it, so. So it's not bad for.
Anything else?
Nope.
Um, the downtown redevelopment projects, um, I spoke in depth of the public hearing about the property lines. Um, supplied with the, uh, the certificate of. Survey and discussed. Um, the potential conveyance of that one point eight seven feet over to the parcel owner to the north. Um. In summary, um, I know that there's been a lot of public comment that the project is taking too long. Um, I can tell you that. I've met with Carl probably every day, every day they're over there working and. They're trying to be as careful as possible to keep the integrity of the building next to them and to keep the city. Rolling as well, so, um, I mean, I've. I don't have anything to gauge it to compare it to, but I believe our contractor is doing a good job. So.
I would say so also, that this is not something that. We knew it wasn't going to be a free. But, you know, just pare it down, and next week you're gonna meet. Where to go.
Well, and, and the buildings are very old and no one really knew, it didn't matter how many. Visits of an engineer or a civil engineer could look at the buildings when they were standing, what was gonna get uncovered when they started to come down. Hmm. Um. I joked the other day that it's like Raiders of Lost Art, because you just really don't know what you're uncovering every time something comes down. And, um, you know, we're doing the best we can with the time that we have and the weather. Um, and our adjacent property owners are, you know, being very, um, forgiving, uh, the theater owners are being very flexible and they understand. The process, so that's good. Does anybody have any specific questions on the project itself and where we stand?
Uh, what you mentioned during the earlier meeting, they're finishing off the now exposed walls that are common walls. And I, I wasn't around at the beginning of the project, but is that a city expense that we're tapping those walls off?
Yes, Ron, it is. Yeah. Um, I can, I can send you, um, after the meeting, the, the boy plans, the JD construction of them. Um, entered into an agreement to complete for the city, to make sure that theater is intact when everything is completed. Um, they'll be putting a, a weatherization treatment on the existing theater wall. And then finishing up the two additions, the. The one that had the most sensitivity was the front sidewalk concession stand area. Um, no matter how much they looked at it, they couldn't tell if it had a structural foundation or not. Or if it was completely bearing on forty eight main until the wall came down. So as that progress got closer and Carl got that clay tile wall closer and closer to it, you could tell that it had. An east side, um. Concrete block wall, but its south wall was, when it came down, that's all was exposed, was two by four construction.
Hmm.
Insulation, you could see the utilities mounted to the two by four construction and it itself has its own floating. Foundation floor onto a cement slab below it. So when JD construction comes back and builds that full wall that'll load to the rafters of that section of the theater.
Hmm.
So it'll be weatherproofed and, um, good for the elements in the winter time, too.
Specific quote, the expense just for captain moving on.
Yes. Yeah. Um, I believe that I'm gonna throw a number of sixty thousand notes with a lot of contingency, because we didn't know what was gonna come into it. Any other questions on that project?
Carl have a, an invite?
You know. In my conversations with Carl, I'm sure he wanted to be done a long time ago.
Um, I'm sure he did, but I mean.
Yeah, um.
If he can speculate out a little further now than he could when it started in June.
The original, the original estimation, once he started out here, July was the end of August, so he's coming pretty close to it. Um, I watched and talked with him and Logan extensively today, and that front facade really. Put a number on their timing and they were here when we first got here and I think he anticipated being gone a lot earlier today.
Hmm.
But that front facade was a poured concrete wall.
Hmm.
No one knew what it was really made out of, so. Um. I can't really tell you.
No.
He's, 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 he's nearing completion.
I understand, they're, they're going at it, and just.
No.
Okay.
Any other questions on that project? Okay.
We move on.
Um. So I don't have a lot to talk to you about the city's deal facts, um, I did provide a. Um, document that I just got from the league Minnesota cities emailed this afternoon in regards to their urgency to call on the governor to, um, hold a special session. Um, as I've reported in previous work sessions, the local city sale tax is time sensitive for. Uh, legislators to come back and be a special session and pass the budget bill. Um, because our. Our requests are tied up and not unless that special session is done by like noon on Wednesday. Um. We're not gonna make it, and, and to be quite honest with you, Max, on a complete timeline. In order for the ballot question to be on the November ballot. We have, had, we have to, um, as a city authorize that resolution by Wednesday. The problem is that public notice for a special meeting requires two days. So it would have had to have already happened. To provide city council proper notice by today to have that meeting by Wednesday. Which is our deadline, so I, I unfortunately don't have any good news for you guys. Um. I was on, um, a Zoom meeting with. Um, a lot of league representatives and other, um, city staff from all over the state. A week ago Wednesday, and there's other cities that are waiting, waiting for their local sale tax requests. To be approved as well, and this has been frustrating, not just in our city, but all over the state. Um. So the league is looking towards, um, urging the, the legislature to change. The statute again to give back that authority to the cities instead of having it tie up. In the state's, um, authorization. Because as it sits right now on a timeline, you'd have to wait till two thousand twenty four again to do this, because it has to be a general election and we only go general election every two years. So it's off the books as of. Right now.
Very good.
My water. Yeah, the library.
Right.
So in your packet is, um, the letter of intent, um, that the city. Um, sent to Deerwood Bank and their board of directors, you can see that it was signed. Um. Um, by Grant Frenzel on August fifteenth, so that they are drafting a purchase agreement. Um, for seventeen, um, at Avenue right now, I've not seen that. Um, so they've agreed to, um, those contingencies. Um, I also have in your packet a draft resolution for the sale of the existing library. Which could potentially be approved on September sixth, that the language is what the council wants to see. Those circling back to earlier, earlier conversation, um. Um, that Daryl asked about these other buildings is how the city wants to. Um, so this, this property, um, it could be. Um, however we wish, I put some general language, um, into the. Revolution stating that it can, you can authorize. My office to take whatever steps it needs to in order to sell the property. But if the, um, city wants to, um. That. More stringent. Regulations on how that's sold and what the asking price will be and who it would be with if you were going to contract with a real estate agent. I'd like to have that known, so that's drafted in revolution.
That twenty twenty two eighteen, is that? Correct.
Now that I'm thinking about it, I got. This project, this stuff with the demo project and my earlier conversations, so all those. Language probably not the same for the demo project.
There's some, some questions? Please try, okay, so it sounds like the city is already gonna be producing the, the old bank building?
So what the city did up to this point, Charlie, is they had.
First interest.
They have expressed interest and let, and sent a letter of intent. To the board of directors of Deerwood Bank to purchase the old Wells Fargo building.
So what's the price that they're offering for their whole loan, far away?
One hundred and twenty thousand.
Okay, and what do they sell in the old library for?
That has yet to be determined.
Working on that.
Okay, and, but you have a buyer on it? Maybe, no, so the question, this is the thing, the city called, we really look at. You got prime real estate, prime real. It's gonna never be taxed again if it ends up on city property. You have a building that you're building over, that'll be already having additional expenses up. You know. People in this community. Are paying our tax rate, I think you look, the city's tax rate is probably one of its highest in the whole state. The, the tax rate that they have. I have a friend whose property taxes are a hundred dollars a month higher than mine, and I live outside the city. And my house is valued at about a hundred thousand dollars more than her. You guys are forcing people who put a port to the lead town. And you're forcing lower income people to stay in town and pay higher taxes. You're forcing businesses not to come to town. Ask Daryl. You know, they're, they're leading town, they don't want to be in the city, but. It might take ten years to sell that building. It might take twenty, so what? Deerwood buy, they were gonna do some of it, let them have. You know, let them lease it to the city. Then do that, then they'll pay taxes on it, but you're, you're forcing. The individuals, the, the residents of this community, yeah, a lot higher property tax. How are you gonna recoup that, what does that, what's the tax rate on that building, when, what, how much they pay?
Uh, I do recall presenting that to the city council originally when Miriam did that presentation, um, between that parcel and the parking lot, it's five thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
Yeah.
How are they gonna recoup that? They're gonna recoup it by adding it to the individual's ta- property taxes. That's how you're gonna recoup it. So every individual in this community, every other business is, is gonna be paying more taxes. Because you know your expenses aren't going down, you know, you know, that ain't happening, you know? And it'll never go back to, to a private individual or never go back to a private business, those constantly pay as a city owns this property for forever. You know, never even get any kind of property tax off of it. You know, it's not much, five thousand, but still something, you know, I'm surprised that that's the, that's the holy thing, I mean, that's. You know, they should lease it to the city. And what happens right now, the state or the county is, is asking. You know, the commissioners to cut back how much money they give to the, the library. You know, so what happens, how are they gonna maintain? You know, are they gonna come and ask for more money from the city to maintain the building?
We currently maintain the library, we own the library.
Right, I understand that, but that you're building the points aside.
Yeah.
For three times the size, you know?
But. Kid need a library and a nice.
They have a library.
Yeah.
And I'm not against library, you know, don't get me wrong in that, I'm perfectly fine with that. But. That corner, you know, and I understand that every. Community is struggling with real estate, I mean, with, with commercial properties, you know, I mean. You know, with Amazon and everything else, it's going on. But.
Long that building been making.
That's two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, but, and Deerwood bought it a year later, and Deer, and Deerwood's intent was, was to redo it, it was to open. And just because they had some problems on Baxter, that's what prevented this building from becoming a bank. You know, it's, so. But it's, you, you're losing, you know, you're forcing a lot, you're, you're gonna, you're, you're forcing a lot on the residents of this community. There are people who say, you know, I'd move to this town, but I can't afford the property taxes, you know? I, I mean, for somebody to be paying over three thousand dollars a, a year in property taxes on a house. You know, it's worth two hundred thousand, you know? It's been a hundred dollars a month higher, what did I?
Yeah.
You know? I just saying, the city should really look, consider what they're doing, really consider, you know, you got, now you. Now you have this, that building, you have that building, you know? How much of the city do you wanna own? You know, I mean, it comes to a point. It's noted.
Okay.
It is noted that's, uh, a commercial district. And one of the interesting things is, is I like to look at old pictures online and. There's a picture from nineteen ten that's taken at the intersection of Railroad and Main, looking north. From where Napa is right now to that corner. And it's solid buildings, all the way up to that corner. None of them exist now. And it's, there's a lot of them are saloons and hotels. In fact, one of them has a prime sign that says Juleson Hotel. So the Juleson family was in the hotel business. On that strip in nineteen ten, so. And there's always a commercial building, a two-story building on that. I don't know what was in there, but certainly commercial. It's well noted and then, okay?
No.
Thanks Charlie.
Yeah.
Uh, Charlie said comment. Call Miriam.
Okay.
She presented to the council a lot of arguments. You are, your comments are extremely. Close to me too, and that was my biggest concern as well. But Miriam had a very good presentation to the council a couple of months ago. To move this process to where it is right now and she might be some insight in just a conversation for you.
Yeah, okay. And it should be noted, the letter of intent is, is contingent on the sale of the original bill.
Yes.
So if that doesn't happen, it's purchased of that, it's not.
And, and the, and the capital preparations that Kichigami has to get back to the city. Are for improvement, remodeling, or building new. And that's sixty-five thousand dollars. So a good portion of that one twenty was being made up by money that was to be returned back to the branch.
But, but then you're looking at year after year after year, five thousand dollars less their property taxes. You know, ten years, that's fifty thousand dollars.
Very important point.
So, and you know, then it's maintaining the building, then it's, you know? This is my argument, I, I, this is an example. I just came back from Anken. And there was an article in the Anchorage paper out there. That, and this is a city, large city, they were upset. Because the federal government had just bought a building in downtown Anken. And they were using it, can use it as a federal building and they were complaining because it was prime real estate. And it's taking property away from their property taxes. Voila, you know, voila, you know, and that's angry, that's not black. That's a huge city, you know, half a million people and they're worried about losing property taxes. You know? From. There's, that's an example, so. And I, and I thought it was exactly the same thing, you know, we're a small town, but it's the same thing.
That's why I wanted you to, I invited, you said you wanted to come in, I said, please do.
I think, I think.
That we hear everybody's point of view on that.
Yeah, I think the steering of this initiative has a lot to do with where. Some people wanna see the city to be in like five and ten years, you know, we, we put a lot of. Um, a lot of backing to our golf course and our amenities and I. I, I can't, I, I wanna speak for everybody, but I think one of the initiatives is to try to make that amenity. Something that's gonna pull people.
The thing though, is the golf course managed property to make money. The liquor store can make money and it can reduce the property taxes for these people. The library will never make money.
I don't know about that. In the long run, yes, probably.
You know? Right, and we, and we'd have a good library.
But, um, here's a.
But I also know a lot of people who won't move to this community. Because they're probably, even the, the, my friend, my, my friend that even moved here said, I, I would have known. That I would be paying thirty-two hundred dollars a month or a year in property taxes, I wouldn't buy the house. I wouldn't buy it.
Houses aren't getting back after part on the market very long.
I, I, I understand that, but, but you don't, how many new houses are on the market?
You know, just in my neighborhood, they're.
You know, the, the city council allowed people who built a new house to leave the city. You know, which was another story, but. You know, how many new homes are being built by? The older homes, you know, their, their rates are lower because they're older homes, but new development, that's far and few between. Because their property taxes would be, the rates are so high. When we looked into it, the, the state came back and said, biotics are one of the highest in the state. That's not a good thing to be known by. Anyways, that's my thing, so.
I could go on and on, but I won't. All, all legitimate points, you know, I'm a fiscal conservative. If I was on the council, I, I'd be pinching the candy in the city. But it's penny wise, pound foolish. It's short sighted, not take advantage of that often. For long-term economic development.
So I think that scares me about this now is that thirty-five percent of the county taken away?
Well, that's not. And their meeting, their, their, their levy is set to approve on September twenty if this council won't have the.
I was talking to, um. Lady from the Midgey Library at the fair and, uh, she was telling me that. There is no way that they, they're gonna be able to keep their doors open as much as they are with the, you know? So buying a building right now scares me. For the city. For that.
I hear you, yeah, but it was a body blow to us to hear this. I was on vacation and I came back a week ago or whatever.
Yeah, I, I know that and it's like. I, I wouldn't, I'm not for going for it.
Thank you, move on.
Okay, great. Um. I don't have anything to report on, we apologize. Um, as it pertains to letter app, um, I have the draft of the ordinance. And exhibit for, um, annexing the city property. Into the city, uh, for consideration on September sixth, drafted by the city attorney. Any questions on that? Straightforward? Uh, I didn't.
For the record, the, the property we're annexing is not producing any tax revenue currently.
That is correct. Well, I shouldn't say that, our cemetery does. Support itself to some degree. We sell cemetery blocks, but then, that's it. And you don't get money from them again. You don't get some money.
We don't get any money from them. There isn't still, definitely, no, I guess would be answered to that question.
Oh, they're not well.
We're again doing a service. Um, if I can move on to G. Um, I attended a meeting on last Thursday. With, um, representatives from the state, um, for the disaster declaration that happened. On April twenty-second and it almost didn't get finished until June fifteen from all the. Um, excessive rains we had this summer, um, I provided to the council earlier this summer. That, um, preliminary assessment that Mike and I put together, so the steps that, um, I'll be taking. Now in the next thirty days is putting together, um, a, a damage inventory of all of those items. And to John Don's point, I can add additional, um, items that have come up. Um, Homeland did state to us last Thursday that because. In some areas, the water is still receding, there is still damage that is undiscoverable to some of the entities. So I hope that Mike and I will have opportunity to meet up and. See if there's anything else we'll be adding to that inventory list, including your concern for the erosion of your road. Um, at which point then, um, we have six months from the de- declaration date. Which was July thirteenth, uh, two thousand twenty-two to get the emergency repairs done. Which takes us to January and then we have a full eighteen months to complete all of the repairs to all the entities. Um, that we have listed and then the process of submitting that to the state and the, and to. And they represent FEMA then to get reimbursement for labor and materials costs. Any question on that? So, I've given you guys the list in your packet. If you know of anything that may have happened on that. Um, big heavy rain day in April that we may not have on that list. Please let Mike or myself know so that we could, um, review it and add it as a potential. Erosion. Repair.
Just roads?
It's, it's, it's public, it's public.
See, so.
It's, it's public, not private, because private has the opportunity to get small business money. Right, and in some, in some, uh, townships and cities, um, if they, if. If that entity has put in, um, an insurance claim, what FEMA and state will reimburse is the difference. From what insurance company, they didn't put any insurance. Because most of what we listed to, um, um, in that preliminary report were roads, infrastructure.
Yeah.
A lot of road. I'm almost done. She said, we have one more thing on the business. Anything else on old business, anybody have a question?
No.
And then, real quickly, Max, on new business, um, uh, post, the postpartum. Um, required some language revisions on the avoiding racial profiling, um, police model policy. I've supplied those revisions for review. I'll have that on the September sixth consent agenda for final approval so that it can be adopted. Any other questions for me?
No.
Go.
Turn it over to your guest.
Oh yeah, you are up.
I was supposed to seven oh two.
I sent you an email, Christina, if you would, I mean, doesn't have to be written in it. Um, this report is for you guys.
Thank you.
I don't know, I maybe need one copy of this, I don't know.
Um, from the league.
Yeah.
They've probably seen it, I think I forwarded to them. I started revising our drug, uh, testing policy, which is now being overused. City attorney, yeah. We was part of it, of the draft. Okay.
All you're brooding. So we're mainly here to answer the questions you guys have about the new laws going forward on adult abuse. Uh, cannery products or edible cannabinoid products.
Really important that you introduce yourself.
I'm really, like I said, this is Christine Crete. We are two owners of your hometown health company. We've been in business since two thousand nineteen. We've, uh, we're manufacturing about the old, uh, bike cap building and the manufacturing, uh, the processing facility for him.
Is that the one called on Carl Avenue or?
Yeah.
Come on, but right by me.
We're Don's neighbors.
You have sign you, John? What, what is it? Do you still say bike cap or?
Couldn't say.
There's no sign of it.
We have listed online on Google for our address of what it is. We don't have any signs on what it looks like. They have a five foot by ten foot sign that is going up, but it's lighted, but not quite done yet. Probably a next spring thing. Plexiglas and some other things.
Are you on the south side of the road?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, it's right, pretty much right across the road from Anderson, Chase Store now.
And your original product you were producing?
We're doing a hemp beeswax bomb with topical product. That we, uh, we waited to make, we didn't make any dummies or any sort of CBD products even that were edible. Until the Minnesota laws changed, that gave us guidelines to work from. So now we're in process, we just started making them, developing these dummies a few weeks ago. We passed our test, um, we actually brought with some samples today of our stuff and one of our competitors stuff that has a packaging. We can look at some of their patchy packaging, it's so large, theirs is not compliant. Um, we all look through some of the papers that Chrissy handed out.
Their packaging.
Their packaging is not compliant, they use cartoon characters and.
I'd buy it if I was my son.
Illegal, they don't have their address or website or QR codes. That goes to, to find any of the information as far as testing goes. Or who they are, that has to be on there. And some of the laws we have to follow through the board pharmacy, that's who, um, anyone has issues with any product as far as you go. You contact board pharmacy, they investigate, they either tend to cease and desist or we're gonna go type thing. As far as I understand, it's not enforced by any sort of law enforcement or anything like that, it's pretty open book. Kinda weird, but.
We anticipate next, next year, when they have their next session.
Correct, process, we're not USDA certified yet for food manufacturing processing, we're not required to. We intend to, we're in the process of becoming licensed for that as well, so we'll have that. On top of our health licensing for processing and this year we're not growing, you know, we grow as well. Anybody have any questions on things?
THC.
THC, yeah, hemp derived THC.
Hemp derived THC.
And there is no difference in that, when you're cannabis THC, it's the law field exactly the same.
It's just a.
We know it. The legal term, term, I've already called hemp, that's three point three percent by dry weight. When it's tested before it's harvested. That's it.
Wait.
Your products are the dark white ones and the other ones are your.
One of the local competitors.
Our baby, our new babies that are all principally white bears, um, will be here in a week.
Yeah, we're about to have that ordered yesterday.
Okay, I have a question, because I don't understand marijuana, hemp, two different plants, right?
Same plant.
Okay, so how is one illegal and one not?
Uh, it is strictly.
Coming from the wife that had a guy that worked for the task force for years.
Strictly just a testing thing, if you test at the right point. It qualifies as hemp, if you test it too late, it qualifies as marijuana.
No kidding.
Most varieties out there have THC, you know? We've created one, uh, to CBG, Ken Giroff, with the University of Minnesota, one of their research, uh, professors. That has a, uh, genetic defect that doesn't produce any THC at all. But that's like super rare, we tested fifty or sixty thousand seeds, uh, to get to that, but as a rule, pretty much everything was. It's so close to this, I had the same exact thing, just when you tested.
And is that like a duration of time that you tested that?
Yeah. Thirty days pre-harvest, most everything is compliant. Twenty-nine days to. Twenty-eight, twenty-seven, we'll start getting illegal as far as, on most.
Interesting, so you have to harvest before that?
We don't wait, for when we get tested, we have thirty days to harvest it. As long as it's tested at the right time, it's still compliant. And then your end product has to be by dry weight, point three percent, probably, of THC, no more. Their end products still have to be tested now. For the edibles, but for like the topicals and all that, nothing has to be tested, re-still test. Um, up until just, uh, July first, actually. See, people have been selling, uh, THC derived hemp products. All over, even CBD products have THC and close to the same level that they're legal at now. Now we have framework to work from, so we're trying to. Talk to the, the different cities and city councils and see what their ideas are on things, where would they let see things go? I know some of the, the rules are that you guys are allowed to tell, uh. I know some of the the rules are that you guys are allowed until uh sometime in January to put a pause on things if you want to. To not sell it in your city, but after that, you can't block it whatsoever legally. Right now, one of the things that the uh, what's it called, the Board of Cities? Legal cities, they sent around some stuff and it kind of confused a lot of people about saying that. Your liquor stores are not able to sell it because of their licensing. And from what I understand, I mean, attorney next week, but. Yeah, just that exclusive or includes a liquor license doesn't allow. See if your THC brought THC products because it isn't something that's in their guideline that they can sell. They've got a certain list they have to sell.
That's all in that resources that it's been to.
To my opinion, I don't have a conversation with attorney, but. Is that anyone could sell it while with retail license, but as long as you have enough sort of tax ID number and sales and use setup. Anyone can sell it, including like sorts. I'll have a, I'll have a confirmed after I'm happy.
But in your opinion, that could change January, if they come back in the session and start changing some of the laws?
Um, I don't know if any of that will change or who can sell it. I'm not buying that. That's all up in the air right now.
It it appears to me as though the legislature is a little confused as to what they did.
Exactly.
And and I don't think the general consensus is they did the right thing. But they're not going to claim that either.
Right.
So they're leaving it up to cities now to make their own decision whether they want to allow it or not.
No. Not whether you want to allow it or not. You've got up until January to decide how you want to handle it as as a city. Do your policies and everything, or if you want to possibly put guidelines in where it can and can't be sold, maybe have to get. Uh, a conversation with your attorney.
Okay, I do remember.
But the way it's written right now, there's no way to block it. I'm all for it.
It's it's already in your town. Been here. Yeah, guaranteed. It's. Regulated, yeah.
I wouldn't know where to go buy it, but. Yeah, where would I, where would I purchase? These.
Right now it is.
We don't have a doctor. We just got our test back on Tuesday, so we had sort of lined up in rapid before we got our test. They were waiting on things, so. We sold most of what we had packaged up in our area last week, so. Except this week's or last week's stuff, the package of. We're trying to expand, do so. We like to be selling here in Black Duck, but we're kind of. We want to talk to all the cities so we don't come in and sell somebody a product in the city as we didn't follow regulations if you can't sell that here for excellent fact. But we waste their resources. And it is going to be, it's uh, there's money to be made to say, there's uh. If you guys do decide to ban it next time over, you're going to cause your people to travel to get it. It's a good, it's safe access for uh THC or cannabis products that we have tested. We use us ourselves. We use the best testing facility, police, the apps in Florida, the tests in the United States. That's a university that's our recommended. We use them to do all of our testing for our products. I would say one thing to do is maybe you guys could do is uh, as a city, make sure all. Cannabinoid products that come in your town have to be presented to the council here for uh for packaging deadline and testing deadline. You guys can uh set up maybe something to discuss with the testing facilities. This is a lot member. This is a company. Does this check out on your end? Yes, it does. Okay, all the packaging meet standard. This can be sold. But it's not anything else. I don't know. Thing that I have as far as maybe as fights on that.
Comments on to other cities that are doing that, how they regulate it and who on theirs, who regulates it in their city?
No one does right now.
Yeah, that's that's the biggest loophole.
It's so new. No one has any real framework.
You can, you can set an ordinance and you can set a policy to have that person or that in the summit and and make sure they're complying with the city. But if you have no way of regulating it as a city.
You're trying to come, I can't remember, in somewhere in that in that workday since you um where they're trying to form a whole nother. So it's board of pharmacy and you know, right now, but they. Yeah, they want to start a board of candidates to have somebody, you know, because right now it's kind of all all their place. Who's doing what? Department of Health is kind of overseeing.
Or the farms or yeah.
So we went from the NDA and uh, you know.
Yeah, our MDA guideline stuff will say anything about testing the end product or anything at all. And up until you that's here in Minnesota, you weren't required to have any sort of testing department sort of have products at all. For the end product, and there should be, you know, it's it's uh. As a business, you should want to do that so you know what you're selling to people. But there are a lot of companies that are not. Especially from the THC products. You want to have your ducks on, make sure you're giving somebody the same amount this time as you did last time and say the next time as well. You don't want to have stuff like that, way more in it or way less in it either.
Right. So the dummies that you guys are um producing on this on the facility are only selling in Grand Rapids?
Grand Rapids and surrounding areas and on online as well.
Oh, you are on your on your.
We're all.
Right now.
We're also federally compliant. It's honored by weight to point one six three percent by dry weight. So we go all fifty states. And last they have, and there are a few cities down in Minneapolis area that have put a ban on it. I think Baghdad did too. So there's a few that I put some ban on, but only until. January. Say later, have that figured out. And a lot of people.
I just don't want to say conducive to ban something being manufactured here. It doesn't.
Yes, it does not make.
And then not use it or be able to sell a product. Okay, people have this all time where they can get it. And we don't sell the public health rule. Sometimes people come in, they try to buy from us. And we do have our retail license and everything as well. We try not to mess with their manufacturing. Get stopped and so I try not to kick around the idea of opening up a small shop that everyone, you know, gets away manufacturing, so. One of the things we want to make sure the city's not getting put back uh, we'd like to be able to sell it here, you know. Liquor store and bar that you guys own, as well as the gas stations and whoever else wants to carry it. People have lots of them where they lost their money. You have the all my issues with the bar or liquor store only because that's what some people are talking about. You exclude other businesses. They can sell alcohol or even tobacco or you can sell. Sugar, caffeine, there's not a big difference. In fact, all those things are worse for you THC as far as. What can you get and what can't? There's a lot of studies too that have shown uh the recreational and medical states, the, you know, the traffic fatalities went down. Abuse and murder rates have gone down. The quickened drug addiction went down, other drug addiction went down. By having safe access cannabis products. And so we have to go from hemp, same difference, just a terminology. But now Minnesota has some safe access points for the people. I think it's a. It's a good thing that the city behind us, especially as a business, it's hard to, it would be hard for us to uh want to stay here if it's not accepted. You know, and we don't want to move it out.
I mean, if we could sell it in a liquor store. Or if we did. Guessing, but I mean, if we could, to me, it seems like that would be a. That's a safer place to purchase. That than it is, say it. The counter in Northwood Slumber, you know. If you gotta be twenty-one or if there's an age restriction.
Twenty-one, yeah.
You know, so. You gotta be twenty-one to buy booze, so. Yeah, you know.
You can do it, that's the line, like they sell tobacco.
Yeah, but. But then you exclude timberline there to carry our bombs.
Exactly.
Or Northwood, sorry. Timberline does too. Northwood itself.
There's a lot more sore contractors.
At what point were the city of Black Duck residents? When did we give our permission for this facility?
We didn't have to.
We don't have to. You don't have any sort of bylaws in there. We we read through them before we came to town. We had a meeting with the planning commission. And what we were going to do.
Any public model period.
Didn't need to be. There didn't need to be. They they are not, they're not growing here. They're growing in work, right?
Well, we're not this year.
Right, they're manufacturing. So the facility meets the requirements of the land use law. So there was no objection as the planning, as the city's ordinance already established against what they do.
Okay, but now the foot is in the door and now we're having edible. Allowed in town. It's like allowing a house of prostitution is bringing up for something. I mean. The associated costs are are draining so I I just.
But it's here anyway.
I don't know. You just talked about.
Revenue, revenue that is substantial and um. Maybe looking for ways to get rid of some of that and it will definitely come back to the city. Hundred percent. I I appreciate we, I had a. Updated website the other day and I was like.
And we have four babies at home, so we're always looking for things to do with little closer going. We either have to go to the media or Grand Rapids for them to do anything, so to be at here where we're trying to.
So what is your biggest issue with that stuff?
Well, I don't think we need another intoxicant. I mean, I'm all for for medical creams and I mean. It it's a plant we get. I mean, heroin is great, but I mean. We get stuff to give you when you have surgery.
More people.
Wonderful stuff. But the same plant also just so heroin, you know, and so there's positives and negatives to it. I mean, I can see the medicinal uses for it, but the intoxication. Angle of it, I don't like. Another intoxicant does not need it. I know I've read over the years that when like in the states that have approved. Recreational pot increased DUIs. And that kind of thing. So there's negative societal consequences. There is.
Well, there is.
They're going downhill in Colorado.
I saw excellent, excellent, some of the finest universities which I attended and graduated from. And and not to disagree with you, but I saw no detrimental effect whatsoever.
I I heard of, I heard of.
Because they were tested very familiar. So you're exposed forty-five days ago.
I I think Brody was going to answer.
Yeah, and it's with the level that that we're allowed to sell, the intoxication is very, very minimal. Be one of our gummies, it's like that and probably maybe of one year or something like that there. If that, they are very low when it comes to potency compared to other states.
Okay, but if you pop six of them, you have.
Not even if you have them, you're probably not going to get too messed up. They're really, they're fine though in the N G P. Uh, the average dose for most people is twenty-five to fifty milligrams and legal says um ten probably being on the low side for a new user. And we also do recommend you don't drive under the influence of anything else. Everyone has them. Should have a, you know, be responsible, whatever they're using. Alcohol or otherwise. I think you're going to find too, in fact, most of my friends don't drink. Um, but they're a lot safer than the ones that do. The choice is made by cannabis users are usually considerably more uh safe than those who drink. Wow, it's talking about the DUI thing. Yes, there is more DUIs being influenced in legal states. But the accidents and things are down dramatically, so there's. Even from beforehand, the bike rental driving has gone down, even though the DUI has gone up. And that has to do with testing because. Not sure if your name is, but Cameron, Cameron had said that, you know, it does stay in your system. You're a minimum of probably fourteen days depending on your body size and as much as maybe sixty. So you could have something two, three weeks ago, you get pulled over and. I'm a diabetic, so my blood sugar is low. They find that I'm on, I'm, you know, impaired. They test my blood. I have THC in it. Now I'm going to DUI. So there is a, there's some guidelines that probably need to be, things, police departments and things like that as well. Not just here, but statewide and probably federally to to solve some of those issues.
So right now, your business is largely wholesale. Is that right to other?
Mainly, we do small model online sales of most of ourselves.
Online sales are directly to individuals. Many of the fifty states.
Network. As long as there's not a ban. We have to look at every address and check the city laws and see if there's ownership. Things are kind of a hassle right now, but. That is what we do.
Do you have your own website?
Yep, it's your hometown hempco.com. Or your own hemp.com. Maybe they both throw the same one. Anybody else have any questions? We did bring samples. You guys want to take some? I wrote that back. I mean, then the two are illegal. I gotta give those back.
Did you state, I'm sorry, did you say why those two were?
They've got in. Like we have B as our main logo. We even removed that from our packages. The vet maybe, I don't know.
Okay.
But there's, that's Paul Bundy and that's a cartoon character gives a familiar one. They have colored fruit. You can't have any fruit down there. But you also have to have um either a QR code or a link to your website that states. Um, a list of things where it's not FDA approved, the address of the business, who manufactured, contact information for them and the. Address and who the testing facility is, the third party tester. So ours has a QR code. You can scan it and I have their website on both to detect that or scan it, take over a website and that has all.
I'm going to use Daryl again here. Logistically, how fast could he have a supply sitting in Northwoods ready to sell?
Five minutes. Right now, we're making. Right now, when we are manufacturing, making a thousand and fifteen six packages a day, we plan to. Triple that here very soon and then add three more ships. So we'll be doing about three thousand a day for a little bit and a couple of weeks we'll be doing nine to ten thousand.
Thirty thousand if we get our shift going. Have you um increased your full time work of what you guys have got on the way that you have between us? And you have five.
Yeah, I've got five right now. So yeah, there's been, I think it's a couple.
Great.
We plan on hiring even more.
You go five full time?
Part, everyone's part-time right now.
I definitely look deeper.
We pay good money for health, we charge twenty bucks a hour. We do plan to have benefits and retirement all kinds of things to continue to go well.
So what can we do for you guys?
Give us an opportunity to educate people, like her on different things to help get that movable middle. Move towards our direction because it's not when there's people that are, you know, with TV cramps, things down people, you know, their entire, I mean. Your entire life, you've probably been told it's evil thing and it's it's wrong.
I remember the pot of the seventies. That that was weak stuff.
Yeah, I see that too. There's no testing proof that whatsoever. I can tell you that cannabis friends today or I know that it's. Everyone selects a different property that they like. One person over here might like something thirty percent, another person might like fifteen percent, similar to what you're saying back in the seventies. But THC is not the only factor that affects uh the um intoxication. Um, and there's also terpenes that have a terpene entourage in back of your body effects. Everyone's different. One terpene and THC combination might affect you differently than it affects me. So there's a little bit of balance when it comes to that stuff. So there's a little bit of balance when it comes to that stuff. It's new territory, but at the same time.
I I'm just saying, you don't, this, I I think. Feed yourself, lick your throat and.
The government actually has a patent. Sixty six thirty five oh seven D one is actual criminal.
You know, whatever.
THC, CBD, PBD, PBC and so on. And anti-inflammatory neuroprotection. That's what got me into researching, you know, I was about sixteen or seventeen years old, I've come as a, has autism, makes you researching. Things on his behalf and I've got diabetes also, so this is myself, it's not nerve protective side of it. Without, yeah, and we also, people should have a choice. Far as recreational, what they wanna do with themselves, if they wanna have a gum or if they wanna have a beer or a glass of wine, there should be that choice. Alcohol away works and now prove it. And that it should just be treated the same and not, you know, it shouldn't be the evil weed, mean orange, it's not, when the government got patents on it and stuff. For the medical side of things. Even the medical program here in Minnesota is federally legal.
I was just.
And every other recreational and and uh medical program in the United States is federally legal. Minnesota has the only federally legal recreational cannabis program in the United States. With our new adult use. So it's real interesting, it's not just the Wild West like it is in other states. We can use a banking system or federally legal as well, so that kind of changes things, we can. Build our business to be nationwide, not just county or city, city. We plan to expand, we plan to hire a lot of people. But we want people in order, we wanna build the education thing for people like yourself here in town, um every so often, get people together, have some. And those different packets, you know, some things that are for it, some that are against it and get some ideas from people too, we can do to help. Ease your mind on things like this.
I know the Black Dot Chamber is looking for after hours chamber event posts.
Anything to give people a pocket?
Yeah, no, we're.
Information.
But I I so I I don't mean to speak for everyone at the table here, but I.
I appreciate it.
You're very knowledgeable.
I like, spent a lot of time on it. Try to be the non-stereotypical cannabis user. But my whole, I use limited abilities, I have to, uh, do for in the morning. One thing that's ever helped, so it's been my life's mission to make cannabis a household name that's accepted. And this is like our first chance to do that. We built Blackhead, we bought a building that was affordable in town. Um, compared to other places and sharp taxes and stuff, so I didn't think it was that bad. You know, you you paid some, you paid to be in town as part of it, you know, but it was affordable compared to other places, close to home. You know, we've already got ties to this area, we wanted to stay at the works, we don't want to. We think it's a lot safer here than we're in the news. You know, in the bigger cities, as far as this type of stuff goes. We can tell the police to come take breakers and our, you know, come take a break, come have coffee, we're always very committed to what we're doing. We're not hiding anything, there are open door policies everywhere, any department, sheriff department, they're always welcoming to us.
Have you been able to um share your your success with anybody at the county level yet? They have they reached out to you, I mean, in Bell Charming, I know you guys were.
We had no one to reach out to us at all from anywhere. Other than you guys. It's a controversial topic.
I get it.
You know, but it does, it makes it difficult to grow when the, you know. The counties and the other cities, it's not hard behind, you know, going out, you don't get any of that new business coming to town, here's an article on the paper. You know, you don't get any of that.
Well, you remember when they were making tobacco at twenty one? We actually did. Uh, toy with the idea of. Keeping it eighteen inside city Blackhead.
Figured it was gonna be an uphill battle.
But.
When everybody else is twenty one around us.
When the federal one twenty one, there's no. You couldn't do it. Yeah.
And as far as like I said earlier, with the city or, you know, towns and what, or whatever, it is what we're doing is federally legal too. But it's not like things are being okay for just a city thing.
Right.
But we leave. It's all new for everyone, we just wanna try to help uh these people mind, have an open door, here's what we're doing, here's what we plan to do, here's what we've done.
I would, I would invite you to a developer meeting too. Those people on in members in there that would be very interested to hearing you guys' business platform.
Yeah, we're open to come to. While it's in the evening like that's a huge fun.
I spoke with. Manager of the liquor store and she is behind the idea, so. She wanted me to pass that on to her in a few years.
Can I encourage you guys to 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 pass your city or county? Yeah. And I wanna make sure from a league and from a league standpoint that we're okay with.
I don't know if they're gonna give you an answer directly.
You know, recommend. Yeah, my concern, my concern is insurance, obviously, as a liability standpoint. Covered under the league and then for the city's insurance trust, but our ground is different. And I don't know if any of that is covered under them, my guess is probably not, it's a.
Probably not.
Yeah, so I mean, they're trained to, you know. There's there's statewide training to train to make sure that the people they're selling to are twenty one and older. Same with tobacco, but I don't know if there's that type of training that's mandated for that either.
There isn't, we've been um recommending to people, I do, everybody. Not required to tell people that, but we do. Seems like it works, but.
If.
It's new, we don't have any sound down.
Some local sellers that are some of the places that you wholesale to, but it's something that has to be sold behind the counter.
Yeah.
It can't be up front.
It's twenty one plus, so yeah, it's always behind the counter.
It's not locked up or anything.
It doesn't have to be, no.
I guess I picture it like a pack of cigarettes.
Right.
We've actually kicked around the idea of renting a spot from liquor stores that don't wanna get their regular retail license. To rent a spot in their store for vending machine. Cause they're already twenty one plus to get in that.
True.
I've checked out the galleys of that, but that's one of our solutions.
I've seen those in the part of. Are the North Dakota regulations the same as Minnesota, they're different?
The hemp ones are the same, I think they've got a medical program there, they're voting for recreational.
Okay.
Minnesota was a nineteen state have some sort of adult use recreational program. Uh, North Dakota is supposed to be one of the next ones, South Dakota. They voted through their House and Senate and the governor put it to Bosh to it. But they, it was voted through, that's supposed to be voted on again here this year, that was two years ago that they did. Iowa, I'm not sure. Uh, Wisconsin has. I think Wisconsin has medical and their hemp products can have a higher milligram. Maybe they're up to a hundred, don't quote me on that. Milligrams per package. Uh, Michigan is fully recreational, medically legal, so a lot of the states that are right around this have some sort of something going on. Minnesota has two, actually they're the only ones owned by Ryse now, but there was two different uh medical marijuana manufacturers. Now they're owned by the same company that's based out of Illinois.
Um, you think, you think on debt had some regulation in there because the remote border crossing?
I think they just got scared by the, what the league that said you set up because it looks like you can't do it at all, they didn't offer a solution, they just offered this. Guidance of what not to do or what you actually don't do.
Do you know if eye falls positive?
Haven't heard anything. Doesn't sound like Grand Rapids does, Gear River is on the fence about it. Um, pretty much everyone. To the east has a, they're all for it, so. But Midgey hasn't said anything yet, but they've had quite a few C B B stores. Seems like they're, have already been selling it for quite some time.
So if someone wanted to do something like this um besides yourself. Is this something somebody could do? Like, okay, that's a really bad comparison, if I sold Mary Kay out of my home and it was my side business, could somebody do this out of their home?
Yeah. There's no guideline for it, there's actually no license. Zero, just testing requirement.
That's a little scary.
Yeah.
When you're developing gummies, you don't have, they they didn't require any kind of sanitation guidelines or that.
They have some recommendations.
On the second page, I think I have, it's kind of goes over.
Basic cleanliness.
Yeah.
We follow USDA examiners, even though we're not USDA licensed, so we can't have to blow. Um, we have a um.
You've got.
High temp dishwasher.
Yeah.
Uh, for sanitization, uh, we've got hand washing station in the kitchen. We have all X F certified things. We tried to be proactive on this, knowing that it's one to do it in that way anyways. So I think you're gonna see the next three to six months that you're gonna have some people that are jumping that are trying to make them up their house. Cause you can, as long as you get a test. But it's pretty hard to get.
Buying groceries in Bemidji. I just cleared out every grocery store.
Well, we've been buying all the sugar and corn stuff in town and every surrounding town.
Oh, really?
We buy.
Yeah. I just looked for road sugar the other day.
Probably wouldn't even buy the ball from us when we own the grocery store. But yeah, I don't, it's uh, it's straight off kind of Wild West. Well, we're trying to do things as if there are rules and guidelines other than just testing. Cause there is going to be hell. In all the other states where there's. Uh, any sort of medical or recreational, there's hardcore track that will see the sale on every aspect of it. And we still have to follow that because the hemp. THC we get has to be, has to come from hemp, so it has to be tracked and seen all the way. So there is tracking on that side of it, but as far as the manufacturing of it. There's very, there is no real. No.
And he keeps talking about the rules, we're parents of four. So we're definitely doing things the way we should be.
Yeah, we have to, that's.
And I'm a nerd. Thank you, buddy, yeah, thank you. Yeah, you can pass those treats down.
Those are great. We have about twenty flavors right now, but. They're good.
Collection year, everybody try it. Thank you, guys.
You might want to try one. I got two left, Daryl.